Open the meeting, we'll stand to say the pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started here, I am going to have Karen come up and we're going to swear in our new officer.
Good evening, thank you for having us on the agenda. You all know me, and I just wanted to officially introduce our new officer, we're so proud to have him on, and Clifton LaRue, our new officer, I'm going to have him briefly tell them a little bit about, tell you a little bit about himself, go ahead.
All right, Mayor Kelly, council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to be a part of this community. Right now I reside in New Ulm, I've always wanted to do something within law enforcement. Recently I've been with ALINA, EMT, I've actually been a registered EMT since 2002, I hope to apply that within my skills and hope to see each and every one of you around in the future. Again, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We're going to do a short, very brief swearing in, and we're very pleased to welcome Clifton's parents here, I'm going to invite you up, his mother has to do the honors, I'm going to have them stand right here, I think, so no one has their back to the council, so please stand right here, Clifton, would you guys want to stand on either side of the phone? Everyone see, so, okay, Clifton, if you would raise your hand, please repeat after me. I, Clifton LaRue.
I, Clifton LaRue.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota.
solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota.
and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Winthrop Police Department.
and faithfully discharge the duties as an officer in Winthrop, Minnesota.
and the Winthrop Police Department.
and the Winthrop Police Department.
The county of Sibley in the state of Minnesota.
the county of Sibley in the state of Minnesota.
to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, Clifton.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Well, we hope to see you around, just not behind me with the lights on.
Just the sirens.
All right, then we are going to begin our meeting, we'll start out with the open public forum, is there anybody here that would like to speak, we have two minutes, if not, we'll move on. Approval of the agenda, Mr. Walton, do you have anything to add?
No, Mayor.
Rob?
I would like to add E, hiring of all police officers.
Okay, Pete, do you have anything? Julie?
No, I do not.
Dale?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Jenny, is there anything you want to add?
Yes, I would like to add F, Joel Ziegler, extra hours.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Motion made, and seconded by Julie, is there any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving on, we have the consent agenda, does anyone have any questions concerning anything on there? Bob Rickheim is resigning, so we're going to be posting for that position, Gordy Grock, of course, is done.
Can we refuse, pull out F and refuse Gordy's resignation? Tell him to come back to work.
He's coming back. You could try.
It's not accepted.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Rob.
Second.
Seconded by Julie, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same motion. Motion carries. All right, new business, downtown employee parking, why don't you bring us up to date on that?
After the meeting last month where we discussed having employee parking on the south half of Second Street from the alley to main, I had a call from a business downtown concerned about where they can park.
Their employees?
They, yeah.
Okay.
And they park on that side of the street generally, they understand that they don't want to take up a parking spot, you know, for somebody who's using one of those businesses, but they felt that all of that whole half a block having it one hour parking was probably more than maybe is needed, they were hoping maybe just three or four spots would be one hour parking and then the rest of them would stay.
How many spots are there?
Four.
Well, there aren't very many.
Yeah, there's.
From the alley to the corner.
I think there's more than five.
Is there?
I'm not sure. I think there's like eight almost.
Yeah, it's a few.
So they're saying they would like to have four as long as possible and only four is one hour.
Right.
I don't have a problem, we split it that way. Because we got to have places for employees to park, but we also have places for patrons to park as well, and I think an even split would be fine with me.
Wasn't the, I don't disagree, but wasn't the Tom Miller lot proposed as a solution once?
Yeah.
And then when they wanted to store an equipment over there for RS, people quit using it?
I don't remember.
I think the Tom Miller lot's supposed to be more park-like, isn't it? I mean.
Turned into a park, but there's still parking in there.
They were when it was Hanson Drug, that's what it was used for, but I don't remember.
But before RS Fiber got going, when we're back when you were talking about doing the gravel lot at the bank.
Right, right.
I think the solution was the Tom Miller lot.
Was to do the, yeah.
And then a couple months later, RS Fiber wanted to rent it to store their satellite dish equipment in, and I think that kind of put the kibosh on it.
Well, they didn't really want to walk that far.
And that's, I'm just asking if it's a viable solution, I mean, I don't disagree, we could split some spots.
Yeah, because we have the city lot that's on that block too, but they didn't really want to walk that far.
Well, as long as you put them down the far end, because the.
Right, have the patrons closer to the businesses.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to make that a motion, Rob?
Well, yes, sir, we'll split them in half and have half unlimited or no limits and the other half one hour parking.
So the one hour parking would be the west side of.
Would be the closest to the businesses, I guess.
The one at the alley was set aside for handicap to get up.
Right.
So, we'd set that one by the alley aside for handicap accessible.
And then there'd be three other one hour.
Right, so as long as we don't block those up.
Right.
Because they were mainly for the chiropractor's office.
Right.
So if we have the one handicap and then the rest one hour and then the other half non, because I know Gordy ordered the signs, they just, we just haven't put them up yet because I wanted to bring this back up.
All right, there's a motion made by Rob.
He's got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Or it hasn't been seconded within this discussion.
Okay.
Is there a second to Rob's?
Second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Seconded, now we're going to have some discussion.
Who maintains those, that sidewalk?
The property owners.
Okay, because that curb in there is not good either.
Well.
It's all up and down and jagged and that, and I.
Or does, is it a business owner or is that a city?
The city would maintain the curb and gutter.
Right.
The county doesn't?
No.
Not that part of Second Street, if it was across main, that's county stated.
Okay, okay.
Is there any further discussion?
Because I was going to say two up by the post office, they patch and patch and patch and it's terrible.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, if not, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Duck hunting?
Would be an aerial burst.
Aerial burst.
Yeah, I heard a few of those earlier.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to go to resolution R 2019-18, resolution ordering inspections of structures per Winthrop City Code.
We sent out four hazardous building notices, two got back to me, two didn't, both 18 and 19 did not, so this is the next step in the process, you pass the resolution, you send a certified letter with the date that Darren's going to come and do an inside inspection, and then he reports back to the council what he finds.
Does anybody have, motion made by Dale, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rob, is there any further discussion?
So this is on both resolutions?
Yeah, it's going to be on both resolutions.
The, yeah, they're the same.
Eighteen and nineteen.
Any further discussion? Did you have a question or you're just wondering if it's both?
He just wanted to know if we were doing one or two.
All right, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Duck hunting?
Would be an aerial burst.
Aerial burst.
Yeah, I heard a few of those earlier.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to go to resolution R 2019-18, resolution ordering inspections of structures per Winthrop City Code.
We've sent out four hazardous building notices, two got back to me, two didn't, both 18 and 19 did not, so this is the next step in the process, you pass the resolution, you send a certified letter with the date that Darren's going to come and do an inside inspection, and then he reports back to the council what he finds.
Does anybody have, motion made by Dale, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, Rob, is there any further discussion?
So this is on both resolutions?
Yeah, it's going to be on both resolutions.
The, yeah, they're the same.
Eighteen and nineteen.
Okay.
For both.
Any further discussion? Did you have a question or you're just wondering if it's both?
He just wanted to know if we were doing one or two.
All right, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, 2019-134, an ordinance amending City Code, section 701, regarding the parking regulations.
And you have the updated one, Aaron had me change a few things in it, so this is the updated one, it specifies the streets in the downtown district, and it clarifies the fact that no downtown parking is allowed November 1st to April 1st, because currently the signs say November 1st to April 1st, but the City Code says ever, at all.
All right.
So this clears up, because I know Karen was struggling with enforcement on that, so.
And did you have a question, Dale, concerning the parking lots?
We've got two lots, Aaron, so can we change it to say lots and give both addresses of both lots and apply them? I mean, it's just, it's just housekeeping, but.
Yeah, well, yeah, we're doing housekeeping, so let's get it right.
Yeah.
So then I'll add the Tom, the one at.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Dale, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Pete.
Again, to clarify, we'll add the.
The.
Whatever lot you're calling it.
Tom Miller lot.
I'll put those street addresses.
Street address, thank you.
I don't know what off the top of my head, but.
None of us do.
The description plural.
Yes, and this is just a first reading.
Yeah, and this takes out all that permit language that we've never followed.
Exactly, and it gives Karen and cops a nice delineated line.
Provo of first reading.
Which will make your job easier next winter.
Approval of first reading, is the motion.
All right, and it was made and seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. E, that was you, Rob, police officer.
I would like the police committee to be involved in hiring of all police officers, whether they are SRO or not, currently our practice has been, I was told that for SROs since the school does 75% of, the funding that it's basically the superintendent of the school and the police chief and whoever else that does it, I think being that the city of Winthrop is still the administrator of that position, that the police committee or representative of the police committee should be in on that hiring and those interviews as well.
Karen, did you have?
Pardon me? Is that me?
Yes, please.
We had a short conversation about it, I've been thinking about our conversation, I'd just like to fill you in on our current hiring process with our school resource officer, it's slightly different than the patrol officer, the school pays 70% of the, and then the three towns, given Winthrop and Fairfax, pay a third of the remaining, someone has to hold the license, Winthrop is the administrator of the program, so right now, we really leave it up to the superintendent who he or she would like on the administration, or, excuse me, on the board, it's been everyone from every administrator at every school to, they just pick one or two people to be on the board, this, the hiring committee, so this last time it has been one individual and the three chiefs sit on, but if our council would like to be involved, we had talked about it, I thought, maybe it would be prudent to do two interviews to avoid too many people, one interview with the chiefs, maybe, and then we could call the, with the chiefs and the administration of the school, this is just an idea, and then the final interview with the council members, I did want to bring to your attention that it may be prudent to, if we're going to include our council, to extend the offer to give it in Fairfax, since they also pay a third, we are the administrator, we do all pay the same amount, so maybe one council would like to send one individual, each council would like to send one individual, that avoids, you know, 12 people on the committee, that could be a bit overwhelming for the candidate, just a thought.
Right, and that's what I was asking for, again, it was only for the fact that I understand the payment, how it works as well, but the fact is that as the city of Winthrop, if push came to shove, as administrator, we're the ones with you that have to answer for that position, so that's why I thought a member of the police committee would, we'd elect a punter, select a punter amongst ourselves, who could be there for that interview, just to have some insight as to who is coming on, because I know right now, that person comes on, you don't know anything about them until they're here, and it's not that I'm looking to, or anyone else is looking to poo-poo the person or the idea of it, it's just to keep everyone abreast of it, and again, being that we're the administrator, it's just kind of nice to have that heads up, I think.
I don't think it'd be a problem having a representative from each council.
Right, yeah, and extend it to them, yeah, I don't have a problem with that, because they have, they have police committees as well, so if they wanted to do it.
Now, would that committee have the right to say, no, we don't want that person?
Well, I think what you, and I know what you're saying about the number of people, you know, Mark Twain said if you want to ever kill something, form a committee, basically, paraphrasing, the worst thing you could do, but I don't, you don't want to have too many, but I don't know if I want to put five or six potential candidates to two separate interviews either, I think we could, we could figure it out to have one interview with all the people, and I'm just saying, it's, I don't, even if you give us, give the police committee council members a vote or not, just that we're apprised of the situation and we know who is out there and who's coming on, that's something we can work out with the administration and the chiefs, if you guys, I guess I'm looking at it more as an advisory role.
Sure, we can, however we see fit is how we can do this.
Yeah, yeah, because.
I would rather not have a second interview, I would rather have you attend the initial.
I was thinking all six, I was thinking like the two finalists, but we don't have to.
Oh, okay, well, but I was agreeing, I don't want 15 people interviewing to one person either, that's intimidating to the prospective candidate as well, so, but, yeah, but no, I was just thinking more so of an advisory, that I could report back or someone else in police could report back, so we would know ahead of time as well, and just there again, is a devise and consent.
How many candidates do you generally interview?
We have seven this past time, for the SRO, and that's pretty, that's pretty typical, seven to 10, except for one.
Do you generally do a callback, you know?
No, we actually talked about it, and not because of what Councilman Edwards has mentioned, but we talked, just because the final two were so close, but we talked about it, but we came to a consensus with the points and whatnot, so we didn't have to, but it certainly was discussed, we try not to if we can.
Run through that again, who was all at the hiring committee, who was the administrator?
It is an administrator from the school and the three chiefs, but in the past, with the previous superintendent, she had, she had five people on the committee, and then it was the three chiefs, so that was, and it just, it depends on the superintendent, I just asked what they would like to do and we sort of revolve around it.
Yeah, I don't see why we couldn't have a representative, you know, from our police committee and from all three towns, you're talking three or more people.
And to that end, we have spoken about a mutual aid agreement, currently, we do have an SRO contract, we do not have a mutual aid agreement, and I was talking to the league about that for insurance reasons, we're going to, just in case, because they do wear our patch, and they're employed by all three cities, let's say, if a critical incident would occur, it's important to have that.
All right.
The deal is often in the details, if something happens, so.
Right, right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to F, extra hours.
With Gordy's last day being last Friday, and we don't have any new employee on board yet, Troy and Oscar and I talked this morning and thought it would maybe be helpful to have Joe come in a few more hours and help do some of the water, wastewater stuff while those two are doing electric stuff, I know they're in the middle of installing electric meters and, and with Gordy gone, we're shorthanded, so it might be helpful to have Joe come in, and Joe would be willing to come in mornings and do rounds and do some paperwork while those two are doing electrical stuff.
Did we, did we budget for Gordy for the whole year?
Yes.
Okay, so then in between time, I mean, he was paid and now he's done, so in between us onboarding someone else, we're not paying that salary out, so the money is there that we could afford to have someone come in.
Extra hours.
And help for the extra hours.
Right, and the new employee isn't going to be paid in this, out of the same way as Gordy either.
Oh, no?
He's going, he or she, I guess, would be paid, out of water, sewer, electric, and general fund.
Okay.
And right now Troy's not being paid out of the general fund at all, he's just being paid out of the utility funds, but now he will transition into a supervisory position because he will be overseeing the public works and the utility departments.
Okay.
But then part of his salary will be starting to come out of the general fund, but not, Gordy was 82% general fund, 18% electric, and nothing out of water and sewer.
Okay.
And these, the staff now will be paid out of everything because they're going to be doing everything.
Right, right.
But there will definitely be a savings to the general fund.
And, but, well, the point was is that, not as much as a savings, but the money is there.
Right.
We're not finding, having to find money to have someone add some extra hours right now, we have that cushion built in.
Right.
Can we talk extra hours, how many hours are we talking?
He's four hours a week and he'd be 20 hours a week, so extra 16, is that about?
Yeah, I think.
He's willing to come in mornings.
I think 20 would be sufficient.
And it would only be for a couple of months, because once harvest starts, he's not going to be.
And hopefully he'll be caught up and we have the extra person.
And we'll have a new person hired.
Do we have all our major projects done, I mean, like that alley was.
No, we're meeting the 17th, Paul Kating is coming and Mark with Quaddie's, and James Monroe will be here that day also, and Troy and Oscar, and we're going to sit down and go through the electric department, we're going to go through the projects that Gordy had started, that, ones that aren't finished, ones that need to be done, try to prioritize some of the things and.
It's the 20th, you said?
17th, at 11, if you want to come, Pete, you are then welcome, apparently I'm buying lunch, so.
There you go.
So, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
For the extra hours, motion made by Julie.
Up to 20?
Rob?
Yep.
Okay, for two months.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We will go on to reports of the officers, city administrator.
What do I have here? Oh, all the storm damage from 2017 is done, we didn't get any more last night, thankfully. I'm working on annexation for Tiffany and Mitchell Hocker, Alsberg has waived the 90-day waiting period, so that public hearing will be on the next council agenda, the annexation for Larry Anderson is, it is completed, it shouldn't say is not completed, I just had Melissa cut the check to record that final paperwork from STAR, I contacted Mandat about the Mill and Overlay on Highway 19, they bid out the job, but they only received one bid and it was too high, more than they had budgeted, so they're going to rebid the project. Friday was the last day for applicants, we had 10 applicants, Troy, Oscar, myself went through them today, there's four that we're going to interview on the 10th, I've set up a meeting with Paul Kating, we just talked about that, I've had an inquiry on solar for a business in town, I'm working with the sales rep to get that going, I've also gotten all of our required distributive energy resources information on our website, that was something that the state requires us to have based on their new statutes for solar, so that's all on our website now, and I did share that on our Facebook page too.
Yep, good.
The utility committee met with a couple of businesses that had meter issues that drastically affected their billing, we had Larry Chapman come up to discuss these issues with the customers, we should probably look at doing these, testing these meters every three to five years going forward.
Yep.
Farm City Fun Fest is not this coming weekend, but the following weekend, and everybody will be here to help.
What does that mean on the overlay as far as them having to go back and rebid it, is that still on schedule for the summer then, or would they be able?
He didn't say.
Yeah, that's what my fear is, now everyone's going to be booked up.
Yes, he didn't say and I didn't ask because I just kind of thought, he's not going to get done this year, so.
Oh, with all the rain, I'm sure they're all behind too.
And down the end here, boy, there is a couple of D-poles.
This is terrible.
They're going to have to do something.
D-poles, and they can't even put any.
Maybe we can get a citizen like St. Paul's got, see that tonight on the news, so, guy's going on Home Depot buying tar, patching them himself.
Well, Gordy's not doing anything nowadays, he's retired.
Yeah, right.
Is there something that the city can do, can we pass a resolution or something asking them to do something about that road issue?
Well, you can, but I don't know what it's going to do any, I mean, I bug him as much as I possibly can, so.
Can we fill it, are we allowed to as a city, or are they like, eh, it's our property? No.
I don't know, I mean, we probably could.
They were out throwing some in today.
Oh, they were today?
Were today.
Okay, okay.
I can certainly ask, if we'd be willing to foot that bill.
I don't know that we're, you know, we're not going to be able to repave it, but, I mean, at least the worst offending craters out there, we could, if we could throw something in, my gosh.
I'd call Mankato TV station up, city.
KYC, yeah, yeah.
City people out there patching their own roads.
We could start a Facebook contest, everybody take a picture with the ruler and see which city has the biggest pothole, and you know, give them some encouragement.
A monetary winner.
Okay, thank you.
Just let them drive through town, that's all you have to do.
Right, I, yeah, I just hate that.
Okay, Jenny?
I spent 29 hours on UDA this month, I compiled the presentation to the GFW School Board along with Mayor Pearson on the 30th, a regional housing group met to see where we go from here, we feel that there are some things we can work on collaboratively, but we are not sure exactly what that is at the moment, we'll meet again in September, Dave and I met with Carl Clockman to discuss the possibility of him selling his land in the near future or possibly doing a land swap, he is open to selling and was going to talk to his accountant about the sale or swap option, Dave also met with Cindy Erhart to discuss a swap or sale option, and she is not really interested in either one at the moment. I attended a webinar on Loas Training, this is a website that will list all of our properties for sale and it can be accessed nationally, I'm hoping to have something done, but I didn't get it done before the meeting, but I'm still working on it, it can be used regionally, you know, citywide, nationally, it's a really cool website, once I get some of our properties on, I'll do some screenshots and stuff for, for the next meeting, hopefully, I'm still working on meeting with Alliance Building Corporation, we're trying to meet in the middle of July, and I attended a meeting regarding Sibley County Community Fund and am now a board member, all of the cities are represented on the board, it is a community fund similar to the Winthrop Area Foundation, and the board will discuss uses for funds that will benefit the entire county, there's a SMF program that matches, if you raise $2,500, they'll match it and gives you $5,000, then they have an endowment fund and a general fund, and the point is to raise money for this endowment fund and you pay the interest and whatever, so, I'm on it mainly just to make sure Winthrop gets represented and doesn't get forgotten, so.
So is this something they would come to the cities and ask for money to, to help fund them, or is it all through grants outside?
That was not, that was not the intention.
Okay.
We discussed it at the board meeting.
Okay. So is this something they would come to the cities and ask for money to, to help fund them, or is it all through grants, outside?
That was not, that was not the intention.
Okay.
We discussed it at the board meeting. We did discuss some fundraising, and that wasn't one of it. The next step is to prioritize a list of things, because it has to be something that benefits the entire county, so.
Such as?
The thing that I was interested in was a trail system.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, something like that. Another park, or trails, or green spaces, things like that, okay, alright, cool.
Alright. City Legal, do you have anything you wanna?
No, nothing really.
Alright, Troy, is there any?
Just Water Department, we are working on putting water meters in, I'm going to have a training session set up with BNR Plumbing, we're gonna get, train them how to put them in, and program them, and they will start after Tuesday. Hopefully we start getting more water meters in, we got about twenty-five residential water meters in right now.
Are you using the system, like, I got that thing in the mail, I read it, am I still supposed to read the water, or both, or?
You're still supposed to read the water, I don't know, does Pete have a new electric?
Yeah, we have an electric meter in your house.
Yeah, no, I don't need the electric, then.
Right.
Okay, how hard are the meters to program?
Not very hard.
The reason I'm asking is, I don't, I don't, my fear is we wind up in a situation we had that meeting about the other day, if we give somebody else control over programming those meters, is that possible?
It's easier if we just keep going.
Are we better off programming them, handing them over, is what I'm saying?
I didn't hear the last one.
Are we better off programming them ourselves, and then handing them a batch that are already programmed, so we don't wind up with a factor issue?
With the electric meter, you gotta put it in there, program it where it's at.
Talk about the water meters. They don't have to be programmed?
Yes, but that's the same thing, you gotta put the meter and the reader together, and wire them together, and then they communicate with the battery and gallons.
But there's no factor setting, nothing like that?
No, not in the water.
How is it going with the electrical meters, how many?
I think we got a hundred and fifty some of those in, almost the first, first bulk of those done.
Oh.
That goes fairly quick, and now we got Gordy's gone, and Farm City Fun Fest, so hopefully after that, then we can, Oscar and I, and hopefully somebody else can start in again. We got four hundred and sixty-four meters, I think, on the storage, so, just need to keep going.
Great. Anything else, Troy?
I think that should be it.
Alright, good.
Nice.
Did somebody wanna do an update on the MMPA meeting?
Well, it was in the thing there.
Yep.
Interesting thing is, is the last meeting, Arlington is all over this.
Data center.
They even purchased land, so, they heard that we were iffy, and so they...
Tell them they heard wrong.
But I was wondering if they need the high-speed internet, then what are they gonna do for that?
They'll haul their own T-one line in.
Probably, whatever.
It's what the reserve center did.
Alright.
We did a guy crap years ago.
T-one back there in two thousand.
And the other thing, of course, is that we're having that, our annual meeting on Twenty-third and Chaska, and any of you guys, the meal is at like, five-thirty, but if you come up earlier, they will entertain you out at Hazelton, if you guys wanna golf, and they will also, if somebody would, I forgot, is that the granite rock down the, with the brooms?
Yeah, I can't think of it either, not shuffleboard.
Nerling, curling.
Curling, if you guys wanna learn how to curl, they'll entertain you guys, your council people.
And the EDAs were all invited this time, too.
And the EDAs are all invited, for sure. And basically, the reason they're getting the EDA in is because they're really serious about building these data centers, and they just want the EDAs to know what's...
Good.
Boom.
Alright, Troy, do you have anything for Fire Department?
No, sir.
Okay. Ambulance, police, was there any more, Karen?
I have a little update, sir.
Okay, come on up.
So, on note of the SRO position, I just wanted to bring you up to speed, I'm happy to report we had a great pool of candidates, it was actually very difficult to narrow it down for the SRO position, we extended a background offer to one candidate, so in the next couple months, Paul Kalow, who's a contractor, retired in WOMPD, does our background investigations, and, so then a psychological medical will be also done before an official offer is extended. So we're hoping to speed it up, because, believe me, the school values, and the community values that position, we'd like to get, you know, it's a he, him started when fall, right when fall is here, but we'll see how that shakes out. So, so that's, that's the update on that. FTO for Clifton is going wonderful, he, FTO, by the way, means Field Training Officer, I think I spoke to, about it briefly in the past, we, about a year and a half ago, we instituted a formal program, and it's been great. We wanna set our officers up for success, so we do field training with another officer who's been trained in FTO tactics, between eight and sixteen weeks, just to set our officer up for success. We have documentation every shift, and we've just seen great results, with the officer a lot better equipped to hit the ground running. So, I approached Jenny, a third thing, I do the emergency management overview for the city, so I approached Jenny about purchasing an AED for the city and library hallway. It bothers me that we don't have one, this building is so, so used, between, not a public one, no, between the, up here, you know, with community groups, the library, the city, so I've been looking at AEDs, we do have a pot of money, by the way, every year, that's budgeted for emergency management. They start, I was looking at Phillips, because they have a model that's audio, it's meant for the layperson, so it can talk anyone through it. It's around twelve hundred dollars, and there's a few extras, like if we would want a wall mount, which we would, and it just, the officers do carry one in each squad car, and of course the ambulance, but if you're waiting, as you all know, three to five minutes with the heart not working, that's the difference between life and death, so, I just wanted to update you on that, I'd like to go ahead and order that. Do we need a motion, or is it?
So moved, that we get this AED for the public, and you'd put it somewhere down in the hallway, or somewhere down there?
We're gonna put it right in between, the hallway between the library and the elevators.
Okay, motion made by Rob, seconded by Julie.
Yep.
Go ahead and purchase the AED. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And we are all set for Farm City Days, so we're looking forward to it, I always work day shift, and then we're still training Officer LaRue, so he'll be paired up with Officer Hacker, and we've always kept the problems to a minimum, we have a successful festival every year. So, and I would like to speak to the Jake Breaking Enforcement, because we have talked about that in the past. So now that I'm on days, how I'd like to do it is, one to two days a week, I'm gonna start between five and six AM, and then work my, my shift. I would like to do that, flex my shift, rather than flex the officer's shift, they work twelve-hour shifts, right now we're gonna start, we start at fifteen hundred, three PM. If I have them work seven PM to seven AM, we're missing all of that daytime patrol, so it's a give and take, unless we wanna go into a lot of overtime, which we obviously try to avoid, for budget reasons. So, between myself working days, when we're fully staffed, which we will, we'll be here shortly, which is great news, and possibly having the night officers, we're looking at once or twice a month to flex their schedules, to maintain that, so.
Good.
Just wanted to update you on that.
Sounds great.
Thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you, Karen. Is there an RIS fiber report?
No, we haven't met since our last council meeting.
Alright, I don't see anything else on the agenda, I just FYI, oh, go ahead, Pete.
How was that, where are we with that park?
Pavilion?
Pavilion, or whatever.
Or amphitheater, or whatever.
I talked to Scott Keister to see if he was gonna get those two bids in that he had out, and I talked to Bob about his bid, and I'm just waiting to get the bids in, if I, if, when I ever get bids in, we'll review them, and...
See where we are.
Yep, once we find out what it's gonna cost, we'll make a decision whether or not we're gonna move forward with the project.
Oh, and just one more question, too, just to throw it under City Administrator, have you had any feedback on the summer hours?
No.
Okay.
Nothing. But we just started, I mean...
Just started, I saw the notice and stuff, I didn't know, I mean, people...
Yep, but I put it on Facebook, and there wasn't any blowback there, so, we'll see, once we start having them, and then we'll probably know more, but I worked Friday till five, and I had one person come in and one phone call, other than the meeting that I scheduled myself, you know, so...
I was just gonna say, to, to that meeting, if it would help, bring your spouses to...
Oh, the MMPA?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we should've already, we...